Joining us for this special meeting called for January 17th, 2012 to discuss the Troy Transit Center, meeting has been called by Councilpersons Slater and Fleming. A roll call please, Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
Quo non present, we will move right to the resolution. Would someone like to read the resolution?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before I do that, I'd like the city administration to give a brief presentation to show how we've come down to 6.2. And I think it's important that everybody hears that, so I'd like them to just make a small presentation.
Is this something we would vote on or just nod of the head?
No. I think as long as there's not an objection, we can proceed. And as referenced by Mayor Daniels, this meeting was called by councilmembers Dane Slater and Wade Fleming to reconsider the transit center matter. The resolution indicates that there has been a reduction from $8.485 million to $6.272 million, which includes everything, contingencies, soft costs. There was discussion at the last meeting on how the project could be reduced, and so at this point, I'd like to ask Wally Alex of HRC, as well as Mike Kirk of the Newman Architectural Group, to give a presentation indicating what elements were reduced to bring the project down to $6.27 million.
Good evening. I'm Wally Alex with Hubbell Roth and Clark, and it's a pleasure to be back in front of you again tonight on this important project. This is Mike Kirk with Newman Smith, who's a team member of the Hubbell Roth and Clark team that's proposed for this project. The last time we were in front of you on December 19th, it was asked of us if we could build this project for $5 million or $6 million. And at that time, our answer was, "We don't think so. We may discover things that get us there, but you have to vote tonight, and we don't have enough information to give you that." And at the same time, we offered to look into it in more detail and at our own expense, and that's what we've done. Our biggest concern at the time was what was the grants going to require for this project. The last thing we wanted to do was commit to a project for a certain dollar figure that wouldn't provide for the requirements that might be required of the different agencies. Since then, we have worked diligently with the city and other agencies to arrive at a project that first preserves the form and appearance of the facility, meets the functionality for the various agencies, FRA, Amtrak, MDOT, the CNR, Railroad, and their approval process. And thirdly, retains the grant eligibility for the project. Through the discussions with all the entities, we have revised the project and believe it is acceptable to all the parties that are involved. The major changes that have occurred affect all parts of the entire project. On the screen as shown here, we have sketches that show the original plan and then show what we've proposed to do to modify that plan to reduce this approximately $2 million, from $8.485 to $6.272. On the screen that you see in front of you, lots of them, this was the original concept drawings that we had included in our proposal. These show various features of the project, the main features being the building, the bridge, the elevators, and the canopies, and then a nice plaza area with the bus drop-offs and taxi and parking areas. If I get this right, the way that it looks today is it's reduced some of those items down, and I believe the next one will show a comparison of the two, so that I don't have to flip back and forth between the two. So the one on the two is the original concept design for $8.48 million, and the one below it is for $6.27 million. Some of the primary considerations that are still part of the project, as you can see, is there is a building, there are elevators, there is a tunnel, a bridge that goes over the tracks, there is a platform, and there is a drop-off area for the buses. But as you can see, the plaza area has shrunk down from the original concrete that was going to be a bigger plaza area with some unique features for decorative designs. It's now the walkway, a 10-foot walkway that goes into the front of the building. We had proposed to remove the entire Doyle Avenue within this area, and we have reduced that to simply milling that down, replacing it with a new asphalt topping, striping that would go with it. The crosswalks would still be concrete to differentiate them from the other parts of the project, so that safety is a primary concern for pedestrian crossing. And the parking lot will not have much revisions to it, and the cabs will come in and simply drop their passengers off on the end of the parking lot. Those are some of the site facilities. Oh, there's things like landscaping has been reduced. We've deleted heated sidewalks, and we've minimized the work in the existing parking lot. I'd like Mike Kirk, the architect, to talk about what's actually been changed in the building, in the platform, and on the bridge itself.
So this is our, excuse me, this is our original concept for the $8.485 million project, showing the glass-enclosed bridge, the similar-sized towers, and the main station building. And then in our revised sketch, you can see that we've lowered the height of the stair and elevator towers. We've converted the bridge into more metal siding with a strip of glazing, and we have reduced the size of the building from 2,400 square feet to 2,000 square feet. And you can see the plaza in front. The platform on the rail tracks will be reduced from 300 to 200 feet, and we will be using heated prefabricated shelters on the platform versus the original canopies. You can also see from the image and here in the comparison slide that we still have a very prominent project, and it is our belief that this will be an iconic gateway structure for the city of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, part of my work over the past three weeks was to make sure that I could bring to this table a package to make sure that the operating and maintenance costs were not, thank you, were not going to be something that the citizens of Troy were going to have to deal with. So there is a letter on the table from Michelle Hodges, the President of the Chamber of Commerce, indicating that we have a commitment from the chamber that the maintenance operating costs are going to be covered, so that the residents do not have to worry about that. And if Ms. Hodges could come forward, maybe she could just reiterate that and make sure that that's a strong commitment from the chamber, and we've worked in tandem together to come to this point. And if you could just bring us up to date, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Calvin Slater, and good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be part of this project. As of December 19th, which incidentally was a date that was an internal deadline, it was not a federally mandated one. It was one that would enable us to keep on track in terms of the overall construction schedule. Two issues were identified at that time, one being the overall project cost, which has already been addressed for you this evening, as well as the operating costs, as Councilman Slater has indicated. From that meeting and in adherence with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, as well as any other legal and ethical obligations, we did begin to address this item. And we're excited to report that we are confident that we, as your Chamber of Commerce, can lead the process to identify a business plan that will allow us to sustain a business model that will cover the operating costs for the long term and the life of the project. We see this as a great opportunity to relieve the tax burden on our Troy residential taxpayers, and to really demonstrate a strong shared commitment on the part of your business community in terms of making this project happen, which we see as being an important community asset, and one that will create jobs, lead to an enhanced tax base, and allow us to be a community of choice for continued investment by both residents and the commercial sector. We will not rely on philanthropy for this business model. We've already begun looking at and identifying a number of solutions to that. Early examples include different demonstration projects that could occur there, educational opportunities, different tenants and vendors, information kiosks, naming opportunities, and the like. We think the bigger story, quite frankly, and I should say we do plan to be action-oriented on this, we would expect to have our first meeting before March 1st and provide you with regular updates. But we think the biggest story here, quite frankly, is the fact that this is the reinvention of the model on how we deliver government services to our community. And it's our opportunity to transform that and really begin to be fiscally responsible and begin to reinvent, again, that government delivery of services. So we're excited about that. We think if we're successful here and we can pilot this model here, that it can be scalable and usable in other areas within the community as well. So as servant leaders, we're excited to be part of this and to be able to contribute meaningfully, and again, to relieve our Troy taxpayers. So thank you for that opportunity, and I hope that you will see that favorably and vote in favor of this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodges.
Thank you.
Councilman Slater.
With that, I'm going to point out a correction in the resolution. If you could turn to page two, down near the bottom. We have two ands. It's not a big deal, but at the end of, "Whereas subsequent to this meeting, HRC prepared a letter dated January 3, 2012, containing a revised cost proposal that modified the scope of the project to be at an estimated cost of $6,272,500 excluding contingency and," and I want to strike the next and in the next paragraph. And this is a very, kind of almost a two-page resolution, so I don't want to bore everybody in the audience by reading two pages. So I am going to move... Maybe I should read it.
I think you should.
Okay. Please bear with me. It's almost two pages. "Whereas a 2.41 acre site was deeded to the city of Troy as part of a consent judgment with the condition that it be developed as a transit facility. And whereas, the city of Troy received a $8,485,212 federal grant for the final design and construction of the Troy multimodal transit facility through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act (ARRA), High-Speed Intercity Passenger Rail (HSIPR) program, Federal Rail Administration (FRA) as secured through a TIGER grant. And whereas, the facility will be served by Amtrak and a Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation (SMART), which will utilize the Troy multimodal transit facility as a central hub for their business network. And whereas, the Troy multimodal transit facility complements transit-oriented initiatives throughout southeastern Michigan, including the Detroit Region Aeropolous Project. And whereas, the purpose of the project is to benefit intercity passenger rail service. And the city is committed to helping achieve, to the extent to which it is capable, the anticipated project benefits. And whereas, the highest-rated bidder, Hubbell Roth and Clark (HRC, Inc., of Pontiac, Michigan), was selected using a qualifications-based selection process, a required process as a condition of the grant. And whereas, on December 19, 2011, city council took no affirmative action on a proposed MDOT subcontract between the city of Troy and HRC to provide architectural and engineering services for the final design of the Troy multimodal transit facility. And whereas, based on express statements made by city council members at the December 19, 2011 city council meeting, there was an indication that there may be support for the Transit Center project if there were cost reductions. And whereas, HRC volunteered to review the project at no cost to see if reductions could be made to the project that would meet the requirements of the federal grant and comply with federal, state, and local requirements. And whereas, Councilman Wade Fleming and Troy Chamber of Commerce Representative John Tagle met with Mark Miller, Director of Economic and Community Development, on December 22, 2011, to request permission to meet with HRC to obtain some clarification as to the costs associated with rail projects. And whereas, on December 23, 2011, HRC hosted a meeting to explain some of the required costs of a rail project and to discuss possible cost-reduction ideas, which was attended by Troy council members Wade Fleming and Dane Slater, as well as architect Troy Chamber of Commerce Representative/Planning Commission Member John Tagle, and architect/Planning Commission Member Tom Stratt, and Mark Miller, Director of Economic and Community Development. And whereas, subsequent to this meeting, HRC prepared a letter dated January 3, 2012, containing a revised cost proposal that modified the scope of the project to be an estimated cost of $6,272,500 excluding contingency. And whereas, the city wishes to construct a Troy multimodal transit center for a total cost not to exceed $6,272,500, which includes contingencies, and will still meet state and federal requirements, not jeopardize the functionality of the project, and which can be accomplished according to the attached letter from HRC dated January 16, 2012. Therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby awards the MDOT subcontract between the city of Troy and HRC to provide architectural and engineering services for the final design of the Troy multimodal transit facility at an estimated cost not to exceed $648,668. A cost which is included as part of the total estimated Transit Center cost not to exceed $6,272,500. And be it further resolved that the total estimated cost of the Troy multimodal Transit Center shall not exceed $6,272,500. And be it further resolved that the award is contingent upon consultant submission of properly executed proposal and contract documents, including agreements, insurance certificates, and all other specified requirements. And be it finally resolved, the mayor and city clerk are directed to execute the agreements once in acceptance form is approved by the Michigan Department of Transportation. Yes, colon, no, colon.
Report.
Resolution moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Are there any comments, any discussion? Councilman Fleming.
Mayor, I'd like to read some prepared comments, including a timeline of recent key events relative to the Transit Center that I think needs to be shared for the public's benefit. To take you back in time, on December 8, 2011, prior to our last council meeting on the 19th of December, I met with John Zurlag and Mark Miller and advised them that based on input I had received from other qualified individuals, I believed the cost of the Transit Center was too high. And they agreed to have Hubbell Roth and Clark work toward reducing the cost through value engineering prior to our December 19 council meeting. The following day, on December 9, 2011, I met with John Zurlag and Michelle Hodges and requested the Chamber of Commerce commit to a business plan to cover any operating costs in excess of revenues generated by the Transit Center to ensure it was cost-neutral to the Troy residential taxpayers prior to our December 19, 2011 council meeting. On December 19, 2011, at the council meeting, I proposed a compromise to reduce the cost to $5 to $6 million, and again requested that our business community through the Chamber of Commerce commit to finding ways to assist the city in paying for annual operating expenses in excess of the revenue generated by this Transit Center to ensure that the operations of this facility would be cost-neutral to the Troy residential taxpayers. I voted no on the Transit Center, as Hubbell Roth and Clark could not commit to a $5 to $6 million maximum cap on this project, and the business community/chamber of commerce was not able to confirm in writing that they would cover the annual operating expenses in excess of revenues. On December 20, 2011, the day after our council meeting, a member of the Planning Commission called me requesting that I meet with John Tagle, and you know, John Tagle represents the Chamber of Commerce, is also a local architect, and a member of the Planning Commission, and also suggested that possibly Dane Slater meet with us to discuss the cost of this project relative to my $6 million compromise proposal. The following day, on December 21, 2011, I called John Tagle, and we agreed for only the two of us to meet in his office on the morning of December 22, 2011. On December 22, 2011, John Tagle and I met in his office and discussed the high cost of the Transit Center and how it could possibly be reduced. At the end of this meeting, we called Mark Miller at the city, as John Zurlag was on vacation, and we basically arranged a meeting with him in the next 15 minutes. John and I talked to Mark about some of the options for reducing costs and asked if it would be okay for John Tagle and I to meet with Hubbell Roth and Clark to talk about the reducing the cost of the Transit Center, and Mark Miller agreed that John could call Hubbell Roth and Clark directly and arrange a meeting for John and I to meet with them. That same day, December 22, 2011, John Tagle called me in the evening and advised that a meeting was set with Hubbell Roth and Clark at their offices the next morning at 8:00 a.m., and that Mark Miller and Dane Slater would be attending. I had intended for this to be a meeting just between John Tagle, Hubbell Roth and Clark, and me, but agreed to attend the entire group. December 23, 2011, Hubbell Roth and Clark, Newman Smith representative, hosted this meeting at their offices with Dane Slater, John Tagle, Tom Stratt, Mark Miller, and I to explain some of the required costs for this rail project and to discuss possible cost-reduction ideas. Hubbell Roth and Clark advised they had already started working on ways to reduce the cost prior to this meeting and planned to submit a revised plan with the target cost of $6 million. On December 26, I left town and returned. On December 29, I left town again on January 3, with plans to return on January 8, 2012. On January 5, 2012, while I was still out of town in Arkansas, I received a phone call from Dane Slater, who advised that Hubbell Roth and Clark had reduced the cost of this project to $6,272,500, including contingencies, and he was working on a resolution to include in the agenda package for the January 9 meeting. I reminded Dane that this was still slightly above the $6 million target and that we still needed a written commitment from the business community/chamber of commerce to cover the operating costs of this Transit Center, and Dane advised that he thought the chamber planned to make this commitment at the Monday, January 9 council meeting. On January 8, 2012, while driving back to Michigan from Arkansas, 280 miles into my trip, my wife and I received an emergency phone call that the aunt we had just left in Arkansas was being transported to the hospital by ambulance with a heart problem. As my wife is a power of attorney and primary caregiver for this aunt, we turned around and headed back to Arkansas. Having made that decision on the 8th that evening, I called John Zurlag. I called Dane Slater, Doug Teetz, and Mayor Janice Daniels to advise them I would not be able to attend the council meeting on Monday, the 9th. On the morning of January 9, 2012, I sent an email to John Zurlag and Lori Bloom advising that I would not be at the meeting that evening and requested that the Transit Center vote be delayed until I could return. From Monday through Friday, January 9 through January 13, 2012, my wife and I focused on her aunt, spending most of our time in the hospital with her. Her doctors advised she was in no condition to stay alone, and we jointly made the decision to transport her to Michigan to live with us. On Saturday, January 14, 2012, I called John Zurlag and others and advised I should be back in town on Sunday, January 15, 2012. It was agreed to call a special meeting on Tuesday, January 17, today, to vote on the Transit Center. Yesterday, Monday, January 16, 2012, I met with John Zurlag and Dane Slater to review the proposed Transit Center resolution. We also made a phone call to Michelle Hodges, the Chamber of Commerce President, who advised that the chamber board was committed to this Transit Center project and was planning a business model to ensure there are no operating costs to the residential taxpayers over the life of the Transit Center. This morning, January 17, 2012, I reviewed the draft commitment letter prepared by Michelle Hodges via phone with her to be included in the council package for tonight's meeting. Since the council meeting on December 19, I have participated, based on this summary, in brief meetings with John Tagle and Mark Miller on December 22, with Hubbell Roth and Clark and Newman Smith representative, along with Dane Slater, Mark Miller, John Tagle, and Tom Stratt on December 23, before leaving town, and then meeting just yesterday with John Zurlag and Dane Slater, followed by phone calls yesterday and today with Michelle Hodges. There has been no violation of the Open Meeting Acts in any of these meetings. I apologize for the length of this timeline, but thought it was important for the public to understand what has transpired from my perspective since my no-vote on the Transit Center on December 19, where I offered a compromise, and that door was left open, and my originally proposed compromise is now very close to being met. I am also very sorry and apologize for the lack of communication with the citizens of Troy, as well as the various media representatives, who combined have sent me hundreds of emails and left voice messages while I was out of town and in the past couple of days since my return. I could not respond to all of you, and while I have read your emails and listened to all of your voice messages, I did not think it was fair to try and respond to some, but not all of you. And quite frankly, I had not made up my mind until today how I was going to vote on this Transit Center. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the Troy City Council for the past six years. During this time, I've tried to represent all the residents of the During this time, I've tried to represent all the residents of the city, as well as the business community, which is also vital to our future. Like our country, Troy is a divided community, with strong opinions and personalities from residents on both sides of most major issues, which is further complicated by seeming lack of trust in the business community slash Chamber of Commerce by some of our residents. I appreciate that the Chamber of Commerce is stepping forward and committing in writing to put together a business model that will generate a long-term revenue stream over the life of the Transit Center to ensure there is no burden of operating costs to the residential taxpayers. And I hope this action will serve as a stepping stone to improve the relationship between businesses and residents of this city. To move forward, we need to get business and residents on the same team, as we do need each other. While I, while I would like this agreement to be more legally enforceable and binding, by accepting this commitment from the chamber, I am demonstrating my trust in our business community and look forward to seeing this business model for the Transit Center come to fruition in a timely manner. There are many uncertainties about the future of mass transit and many good arguments both for and against, and we cannot predict the future of the price of fuel or many other contributing factors. By making this decision, I am focused on future generations who may benefit from this Transit Center and not the next election. The bottom line is, this is federal money. Like it or not, it's going to be spent on a transit project somewhere in this country if we do not use it in Troy. The revised cost of this project, based on the value engineering review process by Hubbell, Roth and Clark up to this point, is 2.2 million, or 26% less than the last proposal we rejected on December the 19th. And we now have a commitment from the Chamber of Commerce to cover the operating expenses, so I am willing to compromise and support this resolution. On a final note, Paul Lynn, a local architect, who has spent numerous hours on his own time developing an alternative plan for this Transit Center with detailed drawings, which he has so graciously provided me, and he advised that I could give these drawings to our city management and Hubbell, Roth and Clark for their review as part of the value engineering process going forward, to see if we could take even additional cost. Mr. Lynn's goal was to take a fresh look at this project and offered his recommendation for a functional optimized solution. While I am not an architect, I was impressed by the design concepts and notes proposed by Mr. Lynn, as he has, who has a very impressive list of accomplishments. If this resolution passes tonight, I have a set of drawings prepared by Mr. Lynn with notes which I'll provide to you, Mr. Zurlag, for you to provide to Hubbell, Roth and Clark for their review, and I want to publicly thank Mr. Lynn for his volunteer effort on this project. Thank you very much for allowing me to share that with you.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Slater?
Just briefly, at the last meeting, I think I echoed most of what, what Councilman Fleming said about our interaction after the 19th up until today. And I just want to say that I want to thank Councilman Fleming for, it's been a very difficult time for him for the last two weeks. I've bothered him more than I think than he needed to be bothered. I've bothered Michelle Hodges more than she probably would care, and city staff, thank you for letting us come together to try and come up with a compromise. And compromises are just what the word means. We all sacrifice, and I'm going to ask everybody to sacrifice on this project. I think it's important. I think it's something positive for this city, for the business community, and I'm going to ask everyone to compromise. This is not exactly what I wanted. I wanted some of the green futures, but I'm willing to, to compromise myself, and I think it's time to move forward and put this behind us and try to bring this community together somehow. And I say let's start tonight. So I'm ready, I'm ready for the vote, unless anybody else has something to say.
Mayor?
Is it impossible to even ask a question about this?
Madam Mayor?
No, sir. Comment, sir, after the vote is taken. You'll have an opportunity.
I listened to Mr. Fleming.
No, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir, that-
The department of the state says they're closing down-
Out of order.
Out of order, please.
I'm questioning the need for the dollars of the grid.
Out of order, a vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman?
I have, I have so many questions that, you know, and I know everybody has to rotate through, so if we can take a few minutes to just kind of address some of these things. First off, in the resolution, there are two paragraphs, and they, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but they seem like they contradict each other. And it's on page two, with the third paragraph up from the bottom. Whereas subsequent to this meeting, HRC prepared a letter dated January 3rd, 2012, containing a revised cost proposal that modified the scope of the project to be at an estimated cost of $62,72,500 excluding contingency. The very next paragraph states, "The city wishes to construct a Troy multimodal transit center for a total cost not to exceed $62,72,500," which includes contingencies. So does it exclude or does it include? Is that a contradiction, or what, what is that telling me exactly?
I think I can answer that question. The first letter from HRC included a contingency from $62,72,500 up to $6, 69, and we, we, I said, "That's not going to work," and we capped it at $62,72,500, which included the contingency. So it is a chronological depiction of what happened. The first letter from HRC indicated that there would be a contingency. I said, "Councilman Fleming," I, I knew how he stood, "it wasn't going to work if that included the contingency." I asked staff to get with HRC and see if they could do it for $272, including the contingency. They told us we could. Then I went with this.
Councilman Henderson?
So would it be safe to say we could strike that third paragraph from the bottom completely?
I think it-
Does it, I mean, it reads the same.
Well, I think it's important that the citizens see the chronological order of events that happened. We talk about the 22nd, we talk about the 23rd, we talk about the letter on the January the 3rd. These are all facts that happened. I don't think we should eliminate facts from, from our resolution. Yeah, that's a fact, and that happened, but the final resolution is there will, the, there shall not exceed $6,272,500, unless the city attorney thinks that there's-
I see it clear now. I, I, I see where you're at.
Okay.
Any other points?
The, the $6,272,500 being the maximum, what happens in the event, let's, let's just call it a year down the line, and those costs do exceed $6.2 million, and we're halfway into the building, there's no roof on it, and one of the elevators is enough. What, what happens at that stage of game? Do they come back to city council and request another million or two, or where are we at?
I think I, I can also. That was, that was, I was asked and answered by Councilman Teets last meeting. There's a contingency built into the $6,272,500 figure. There's, there's a built-in 15% contingency. This project, I, I wish we wouldn't try to muddy the waters. There will not be any expenses above $6,272,500. There's a 15% contingency built into that figure. We don't have to worry about that.
May I have a follow-up? If, if we're so confident of that, then I would like to add something to the resolution in wording to this effect. "The multimodal transit center shall not exceed $6.272,500, and the overruns in project costs will be absorbed by the contractors, architect and project manager as to be specified in the project contract documents. The city of Troy will not authorize or pay for any cost overruns associated with this project beyond $62,72,500."
Maybe, maybe we could get them to, but this is all covered in the contract that, that we're going to have with HRC. These are non-issues that are already covered. We have a project manager.
Would you like to comment?
Sure, I have a general comment, and then I can have more specificity from either Mark Miller or Steve Vandette, our city engineer. If city council approves the Transit Center project by awarding the AE contract to Hubbell, Roth and Clark, the next step is to hire a construction manager at risk. And at that point, the construction manager at risk would be given a project budget, and that's how much money that, that person has to work with. As long as city council doesn't change the scope of the work, that construction manager or firm is responsible to deliver all of the elements contained in that specification, everything you see up there, you know, for a sum not to exceed whatever that number, the total number is $6.27 million. The budget number is going to be somewhat less than that because you take out Hubbell, Roth and Clark's cost for the design work, you take out the construction manager's at-risk cost, you take out the contingency initially, and you hold that in abeyance for something that may come up that's unforeseen, like a, a strike in the steel industry, or a certain soil stratification that requires more foundations. But that's my understanding of how it works. I'd like to get verification from those folks that know more than I do about the process, which would be either Mark or Steve Vandette.
Steve.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I think John Zurlag described it very accurately. As he mentioned, there is a construction manager at risk, and as the name implies, the construction manager is at risk for any cost overruns over and above the guaranteed maximum price that he is required to submit. As long as the, there is no change in scope of the project, the construction manager is responsible for any cost overruns, and that comes right out of his pocket. So we are not at risk for construction overages that comes from the construction manager.
And those terms are included in the contract with the construction manager at risk.
Other comments or questions, Councilman Henderson?
It's probably no surprise, but, you know, I've been opposed to this Transit Center since I started reading up on it two years ago, and I've, I still have a, a big issue with the fact that we had an eight and a half million dollar project, we say no, and all of a sudden, "Oh, I doubt it, we were just kidding, we can come up with $6.2 million." I just don't, yeah, can we do, could we do it for four million? Maybe three, how about three? I just don't, I don't understand why does we give, we give an architectural firm, I, and I've joked about this with friends of mine, I, I can just see the negotiations initially on this thing. "Do you think you guys can build a, a train center for us?" "Yeah, well, what's the budget? Eight and a half million? Yeah, we can do that for that." That was the extent of the, the negotiations. Obviously, or they wouldn't have been able to come up with $2 million cuts over a two or three week period of time, just because we said no. And I just, I, I think the whole project is suspect. I don't see the benefits.
Excuse us. Councilman Henderson, did you want to forward that amendment? And do we get a second and, and then a discussion on whether we want to add the amendment?
Mayor, if, if there is a, a motion to amend, you certainly can make that, and then you would need a second, and then you would need to vote on whether or not to accept that amendment.
I would feel more comfortable making the motion and, and having it included, you know, to, to not include it and then have it as part of a, a contract further down the line that we have to approve. If, if we're going to vote on this thing and it, and it passes, I would feel better safeguard the city of Troy on $6.2 million, not, oops, we need $7.2 million.
Would you like to read that again for the public?
Therefore be it further resolved that the, the total estimated cost of the Troy multimodal transit center shall not exceed $6.272,500, and the overruns in project costs will be absorbed by the contractors, architect and project manager as is to be specified in the project contract documents. The city of Troy will not authorize or pay for any cost overruns associated with this project beyond $6.272,500.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second?
A second.
You a second?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For the manager, and then you can delegate. Essentially, this is a belt and suspenders issue, isn't it? I mean, we're slapping on a belt, or maybe we're putting on suspenders at this point on the belt that's already there. Is that correct?
That's correct, and, and I would request that the proposed amendment be modified because the construction manager at risk be responsible for the overruns, the contractor wouldn't be.
Did someone want to make that amendment?
I'll, I'll make that amendment to, to the amendment that's on the table.
Okay, so the modification to exclude the contract, no, to be the exclusive liability of the contractor at risk or construction company at risk?
Yeah, I think what's being asked is that you're going to solidify, again, the, the maximum project cost of the $6.2 million, and that the construction manager at risk that would be approved as the next step would be responsible for any overruns pertaining to the, to the budget that he has provided initially.
Do we have a second for the modification?
Yes, that is correct.
We have a second for the modification?
A second.
Okay, the modification was forwarded by Councilman Teets, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Vote, please, or discussion. Councilman Slater?
I, I think I need to ask the city attorney, is that, is that legal to, to do that?
Well, again, you know, we, we certainly prefer to have an opportunity to not have these, with such a detailed resolution, we prefer to have it ahead of time so that we're not scrambling at the table. I know that we have not had an opportunity to pass this amendment by the Federal Rail Administration and also MDOT, but again, it's, it's really just restating that this is a total cost. We do have a contractor at risk, that's part of the project. So again, to the extent that, that that's what the resolution says, it's just duplicative of what's already in here, so I, I don't see, I don't see that that would be an issue.
Yes.
I have a couple of comments, but I guess in terms of modifying this to include language about the contract, my only concern is this. When we are actually dealing with each of these individual contracts that will be a part of this project from going forward, going forward if it's, if it's approved by the majority of council tonight, as those contracts are brought forward, there's, there's considerable amount of time that's spent on them, there's time where they are at the attorney's office, the attorney's office, there's time where they're at the management office, and each provision is carefully looked at in terms of what we're trying to accomplish and what our requirements are per this resolution. So I have some concerns, not about the concept that you're forwarding, and I think that we were given some very clear answers tonight, that that is in fact what will happen here when we're hiring a construction management company, a construction manager at risk. But I do have some concern about putting language in here that's kind of haphazard, and then later, when the actual contract is before the city attorney's office, that, that may have some effect on what they need to do to legally make sure that the contract does that. So I'm not sure if the information that was given to you tonight and the fact that that is actually going to be why we're, we're hiring the construction management company to do that is enough to satisfy you, or if you think that it's important to add that. I'm just a little bit concerned about adding language in because it's really restating what we've already stated here at the meeting, which is already stated here when we're, we're giving a hard cap to what that amount can be, including contingencies, and then kind of haphazardly adding some language into the resolution. So I don't, I don't know what the rest of council feels about that. I have some, some concerns, just given that we know the process of how we're going to be looking at each individual contract, and that language will be specified in the contract, and then we'll be approving that contract. So we're going to have an opportunity to discuss it again. I'd rather do it at a time when we're looking in detail at that contract as opposed to adding some language in here, kind of at the last minute.
And Mayor, one of the reasons that I even bring it up is because I want to hogtie this thing. I, I don't want it to go $6.3 million. And if we need to, if we need to have multiple ways to address that, then we need to. That's, that's my, my view.
Councilman Slater?
No.
Any other comments?
It's redundancy. I think it's not needed, personally.
Okay. So do we first vote on the modification to the amendment? Okay, vote, please, Mrs. Bittner. Councilmember Campbell?
No.
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. So now we vote on the amendment?
No.
No?
It is amended, Mayor, and so the vote is now on the resolution as amended.
Okay, oh, I see, all right, all right. So now the vote is on, there's no further discussion, right? We're all set. Councilman Teetz?
To speak on the resolution itself?
Yes.
To address the ongoing expenses of this project, Reagan was fond of saying, trust but verify. Well, unfortunately, in this situation, I can't verify because I was handed the letter from, I received the letter from the chamber today at 1:00 P.M., and it, well-written letter and so forth, but there are no details. And it's a concern, and that's one concern. The second, the second letter we have at the table, I don't think we've discussed it, is a letter from the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation stating that they would work with us to charge a $1 tax or surcharge for every passenger, it's potentially charging a $1 surcharge or tax for passengers that board or deboard in Troy. And so that's something else, and City Manager Zurlag, when I spoke with him yesterday, told me about that, but this is the first I've seen the letter. Those, those things aside, I can count to four as quickly as anyone else can, and, you know, I will be voting no on that, or no on the resolution for those reasons. However, I'll be cautiously optimistic after it passes, and hopefully be a good steward of the taxpayers' money to watch that these quarterly reports do indeed, or quarterly reports from the chamber do indeed cover the ongoing operating expenses. Like I said, I'll be very cautiously optimistic. And hopefully, we can move together as a city after we've, you know, whether you're for or against it, we need to circle the wagons. And even though you may disagree with the whole idea like myself, I think you have to start moving forward after, after this passes, because like I said, I can count to four just as quickly as anyone else. And so I'll be voting no, but for those reasons, and we shall go from there.
Thank you. A vote please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Motion passes.
Public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
Okay, now, we have public comments. Oh, wait a minute, we have a special presentation by Bruce Bloomingdale?
No.
Oh, okay, all right, that's a mistake, all right.
You might want to take a break, just so much.
Take a break, Mayor.
We take a break?
So did.
Councilman Slater suggested we take a break. We'll take a five-minute break. Meeting is over.
We have approximately 21 people here that would like to speak during the public comments section, so I'll call the first five up to the podium. Rob Bitner, Anthony Noakowski, Rob Kerrigan, John Vert, and Paul Beck. Yeah, we have some people that might be missing. You're John Vert. You're Anthony Noakowski.
Yes.
Okay, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Sure.
Mayor, Council, I'm looking at you, some of you people, and I'm disgusted with you. Okay, I'm a taxpayer, Troy taxpayer. The people of Troy voted, and they voted that lady in as mayor with the most votes, and said, "No more taxes. No more taxes." And here we are. You're slapping us in the face. And I'm most surprised with you, Maureen McGuinness. You're the ethics lady, and here you are with these people, backroom dealing to make something happen against the will of the people. I hope you're satisfied. But I want you people to understand one thing. I'm retired. I'm 71 years old, been in Troy for 33 years. Very seldom have I ever come to a council meeting, but rest assured, I will be around. I'll see you again.
Thank you. Rob Kerrigan.
Good evening, council members. I referred to this article in the Washington Post to Councilman Fleming when I sent him an email yesterday. This was written on the 15th of January by Michael A. Fletcher. The headline is, "Plans for High-Speed Rails Are Slowing Down." I'm going to read about 100 words here. Critics began panning the first leg of California's futuristic high-speed rail network as a train to nowhere, soon after officials decided to build it not in the major population centers of Los Angeles and San Francisco, but through the state's Central Valley farming belt. Since then, things have only gotten worse. Numerous projects have resulted in spiraling cost estimates, and eroding political and public support now threaten a vision of train travel that President Obama promised would transform the U.S. transportation, much as the interstate rail or interstate highway system did more than half a century ago. Obama set a goal of providing 80% of Americans access to high-speed rail within 25 years, but that lofty vision is yielding to the political gravity generated by high costs, determined opponents, and a public that has grown dubious of the government's ability to do big things. Virtually none of the projects has gotten off the ground, and the one that has is in trouble. Now, we may have a nice $6,272,500 Troy Transit Center that can be accessed by train and bus, but the fact is that high-speed rail is nonexistent around these parts, and so now we have a potentially lovely building but a train wreck in terms of the transportation system that's going to support it. All of the council members are probably well aware that this kind of situation existed. Responsible citizens from Troy will be watching and monitoring as this project unfolds. I mean, monitoring the cost, the timing, whether the contractors are doing their jobs. Responsible citizens of Troy will remember how this project got approved. And finally, responsible citizens of Troy will judge and then make their decisions at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you. John Vert.
Talk about being a dime late and an hour short, right? Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I think if we're putting our faith in the Chamber of Commerce, I think we all should take a look at the Aloe Terra and all the support that that building, which is falling apart, which was a great deal supplied or proposed by the Chamber of Commerce. I think maybe we should see how much we're going to get backed and supported. If you want to go look at it, it is falling apart, and the citizens of Troy are going to have to do something about that. So you people can take it from there.
Thank you. Paul Beck. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm very disappointed that you didn't have the public put their two cents in prior to the vote. You heard from the city manager, you heard from a couple of councilmen, you heard all the pros, but you didn't hear any of the cons. And I just hope that this is a lesson for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. John Ashcraft, Marv Reinhardt, Richard Peters, Cynthia Wilshire, and Mary Ann Bernardi. Good evening.
John Left. I'd like to make a comment about Councilman Wade leaning on the council Troy chamber, or I call them crooks, because look at the solar house they gave us. Wasn't that a fantastic thing? We can just go there now and just see it. So Councilman Wade puts his whole political career on the Chamber of Crooks. That's pretty risky. You're probably not going to run again, because you don't, they won't, they won't help you in your career supporting the Chamber of Crooks. Also, I mentioned that there's 501(c)(3) collecting money for 501(c)(3) in the trust group. And I do have the pages here, but unfortunately, your printer down there that only takes a dime, because this is the city of the future, doesn't work. But I'd like to bring up additional costs at the transit center. What we have here is the order District 10 of something, but it's a Clark Hill 501(c)(3). So Clark Hill took a piece of property off the tax rolls. Clark Hill is also responsible for that Scottish thing over there that took over the Mountain Jacks area. More taxes taken out of the city because of Clark Hill, because these guys don't care what Clark Hill does as a city, because Clark Hill puppets. There's your puppets right there, Clark Hill. These are your puppets. That and that Michigan MLL thing is your puppets. Two, in this paper, it said that the stranger, who's called the Slob, attacked our mayor, but the next paper was talking about the Bank of Mafia is also the Italian bank. So this is the type of people that are attacking our mayor. They think the mafia runs Italy. That'd be stupid, wouldn't it? Okay, also, I get these what I call trolls. They attack me on the net. Here's this guy, he's got 400 friends. What I do is I turn this over to people, and they run down every one of these friends and let them know they're bothering me. Okay, so whenever you guys run this stuff, every one of your friends get a message from me, and I tell you, it's not polite. Okay? And then we have this guy called Marvin Gardens. He says he worked for Magma. Remember Magma International in that letter? Well, the PR department was really interested to know who's masking around as Magma, attacking people on this transit center. So I'm telling you, you people think you can hide on the net, you can't hide on the net, okay? The fake names you guys are coming up with, I just track them down, and I let other people handle the problem. Okay, then we get this thing loaned from Kresge Corporation. Loan this city money for a business, 100, 100, about a million bucks. And you know what the article says? It was an illegal loan, because it's supposed to only put it on building a project, not a building. And I bet you the, I bet you Kresge Foundation has something to do with the Chamber. And as far as John Popovich goes, Doug Schroeder, okay, I've been chasing their butts all through high school, and they're nothing but F-ups. Understand that? I didn't say the word, but that's what they are. And if they don't talk to me, I'm going to go to his office over there at Henry Ford and drag them out of the thing, because that guy played a bone like you wouldn't know. Understand? I was third-chairbone, he was first-chairbone trombones. That's how well I know some of these people that I would not even let my sister look at. Okay, these guys were crumbs in high school, and they're crumbs today. Doug Schroeder, John Popovich, and Ramsen of the Kresge Corporation? I wouldn't trust that guy with nobody. So this is how this city's going to start with, screwing the citizens. I'm going to come back, because like I said, I will launch that lawsuit that the mayor put against me to clear my name, because I want that man back on the stand, because my lawyer got some questions to ask you, Councilman Slater. You have a good day. I'll be back. You have a good day.
Mr. Peters.
Well, I like Marvin, and we're friends, but we don't always agree. I just want to say I don't think you're a bunch of crooks. I think you took some courageous votes here tonight in view of stiff opposition. I think both sides kind of won. The other side, they got $2 million, and our side, obviously, we're glad Councilman Fleming came, you know, made his courageous vote. I was looking at the BTU, or the average per person here, and efficiency, they're saying that van pools are 1.5 per person, and it's a BTU of 1.3. Vision hybrids are 1.6, motorcycles 1.8. And then it gets to Amtrak 2.6, 2.7 for rail, and 2.9, and airplanes are 3.2. But if you believe, like I believe, that we're actually paying $15 a gallon, if you look at the Middle East, of course, right now, we're standing in our aircraft carriers, and the potential for 20 million refugees is at stake, then you get a different perspective of what we're looking at. And I think, you know, I respect the oil industry here, in the labor union, et cetera, and I hope they wish they do well, and I hope so. But I believe this state needs competition, and I think they need to cooperate. Like, we see that we are merging in a global market, you know, there's India, China, Brazil, you know, there's countries in Africa, there's all over the world, and they're going to be emerging, and they're all diverse, and we have to compete with that. And so I feel that we have to do that. We also, a couple of things here. Tokyo, their train, the Shinto something, Shinto Kansik, it, they go about 100, between 100 and 200 miles an hour, but the average is around 125. It goes 300 miles, it's a bullet train, it has 150 million people a year, it costs $2 to ride in a 300-mile radius. As far as the light rails, Baltimore had 36,000 people last year. The average cost per day was $3.60 per month, I think it was $16, and for seniors, there was a discount. And it had, overall, light rail had an increase of 4% this year. So these are some of the facts I'd like to say, and hopefully, the, we made the right decision here, and God bless Troy, and God bless America, and I hope we all do well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cynthia Wilshire?
Yes.
Good evening.
I've lived here for 57 years. Tonight was really groundbreaking, and I want to congratulate everyone involved in getting this program through. It's a plus. It's good press, imagine that. We've had just too much bad press, and I'm glad to say that I'm one of the few cheerleaders in this group. And as far as I'm concerned, if somebody doesn't like what's going on where you live, then move. Instead of coming and complaining, week after week, it's the same thing, it's the same people. We need happy thoughts, and the happy thoughts will transfer to you people, and you will see by just this step forward between everyone involved, the architects, the city, the council, the Chamber of Commerce, this is going to go a long way to bettering our city now that we're on the same page in cooperating. And I understand the no votes, that you have reservations, and I hope to prove you wrong. I hope that you see that this is really going to work, and in that vein, push some of the other projects that have been on the slate for years and years that nothing's been done about, like the Maple Road project. I was involved with that, and it is a fantastic project, and I'd like to see some of that go forward now that we've got this off the table. Thank you all for all the consideration you've given the city, and this time, you did good for the city, not personally. Thank you.
Mrs. Bernardi?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. If I'm not mistaken, I think I've just been invited to move from the city, along with the thousands of other people in the city who object. But I had two questions about what just transpired. One, and I wrote it down as soon as I, but I couldn't come up here, and I wish I could have, and oh, by the way, in terms of rules and procedures, gee whiz, I think we had a couple over five-minute from the council up here. And I also, I know I'm diverging, but the last council, the old council, I wish I had known about that rule, because I would have spoken up, because there've been, there were hours and hours and hours on every issue that were well over five minutes. And I'm not saying one issue, but on every, every issue. I mean, I know, because I watch every council meeting, and I mean, I was just trying to keep my head, you know, keep my eyelids open, and not much was really said, but it would just go on and on and on indefinitely. So I'm sorry, I had to, I diverged, and I apologize for that. My two questions that I frantically wrote down but couldn't come up, it's not your fault, I know it's the procedure of a special meeting, so I had to sit there, but here are my two questions. One, where in this resolution does it talk about the commitment or the promise, if you want to call that, call it that, of the Chamber of Commerce that they will make this maintenance revenue-neutral to the city? I mean, you know, a letter is not a legal document, as far as I'm concerned, and the resolution is a legal, standing, binding, promise, commitment, tells you where the council, what the council actually approved. And I do not see anything in that resolution that talks about the maintenance fee and the fact that the Chamber of Commerce is committed to covering that for us, so that it'll never land in the lapse of the taxpayer of Troy. I don't see it anywhere in there. That was my first question. Well, in a question format, I just would hope that you would address that after I leave or sometime during council comments, so that you would explain to me why that wasn't in there, and how, how you could possibly rely on a promise in a letter. I mean, it, it's beyond my comprehension, and I hope you can explain it. The other question I had is, would the DDA, in debt up to their ears, and it's a well-accepted fact that if something isn't done by 2015, their debt will end in the taxpayer's lap, how can they take on a risky promise or commitment like that and say that, well, you know, if there is an overrun on the money, that they will make sure that it doesn't land in the taxpayer's lap? How can they take that on when they are not fiscally sound themselves? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll call the next five, Dan Fair, Barbara Yeagley, John Timmons, Charlene Feminino, and Sam Crawl.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
The entire hard-working city council and city management. Let me begin by saying, when I came in to sign in tonight, I was informed that my comments did not pertain to the Transit Center, and I wasn't allowed to speak tonight. Later in the meeting, I did talk to Lori Bowman, and she clarified that and said I was allowed to. So, Madam Mayor, with your permission, I would like to make my comments that do not relate to the Transit Center. May I, please?
Please.
This week, the Troy Times once again printed that Troy was rated the safest city in Michigan, and I believe the 19th safest city in the nation. And I came here tonight to say thank you to our entire Troy Police Department, especially the chief mayor, all our hard-working officers. I'd like to thank this entire council for making resources available to our department to do their job, and I hope they take that in consideration as time moves on and we start talking about the city budget again, that emphasis is on Troy PD to try to bring them up to full headcount. I'd also like to thank the citizens that helped make this possible, and also the Citizen Watch Program, I believe, played a part in this. So again, kudos to everyone involved. Someone before me made comment regarding happy, being happy. I think we should be very happy about this. I know we've been talking about a lot of different things in this city, but this is one thing we stand proud on, and I hope this makes the national news as well. And thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Oh, let's see, Barbara Yeagley?
Yes, ma'am. Well, four years ago, I would have thought that the transit station was a good idea, but then I took a Amtrak train to Chicago and then on to Colorado. Worst experience. You know, if you don't have the product, you know, the fancy buildings aren't going to do that much good. I don't personally plan to ride in another train again, not in my life, and I certainly don't encourage anybody to do that until they make it a better train system. Bus is the same way, you know, you see all the empty buses, and I think they've talked about that here. Pontiac Transit Center's empty. You know, so I think we wasted money, but we wasted other people's money, right? You know, I had worked for a plant manager, and that was his goal in life, was to use other people's money. And I think that's, you know, generally the feeling that people have, that we're using somebody else's money. You know, I got to wonder, though, if the Chamber of Commerce thought this is such a great idea...